Members of the audience are welcome to ask questions and share insights on committee of the whole agenda items as they are being considered by the school board. Please raise your hand to be recognized by the board president. You are asked to come to the microphone so that everyone can hear your question or idea. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the agenda item being considered. And can I have a roll call, please?
In Benson Moreau.
Present.
Michelle Jepson.
Here.
Daniel Melton.
Here.
Jeff Olson.
Here.
Precious Scherz.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
President.
All right. Moving on to item C, approval of the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as written, please.
It's all moved?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Now we're moving to item two, which is the presentations for this evening. Item A is the student, staff, and community recognition. And we have a few of them tonight, which is awesome again. So the first two, if we could have Sue Mooney and Colin Huffer, please come forward, and nominated by Mr. Scherz, if you would come forward. With the absence of Mr. Lucius, Colin and Sue have taken on great responsibility. They have helped coordinate intakes at the alternative school and have continued to maintain a great learning environment. They have worked diligently on teaching, scheduling, and reporting. Their ability to maintain a positive learning environment has been vital to the success of their students. If we could have a round of applause for them, please. Is Mr. Parrish here tonight? Is Mr. Parrish in the house? He is not. Okay, I will read if we're in for you anyway. Dave has provided us countless hours of coverage at the alternative school to help maintain a high level of education. He has offered help on short notice and has gone above and beyond while covering absences over there. We are so grateful to have him as part of our substitute team. And he is also nominated by Mr. Scherz. If a round of applause, please. All right. Moving on, I'm going to try not to butcher your name. Rachel Lasser, is that correct? Lasser, okay. All right. Can you come forward, please, Rachel? And then Mr. Berghammer and Karen Collins as well, please. Rachel Shines is a very positive role model of the rail's way for our children and staff. Rachel's upbeat, can-do attitude is contagious. Her ability to be flexible, self-directed, self-motivated, and always attentive to the needs of our students and staff is a start to expressing how truly wonderful she exemplifies our school motto of excellence. We are beyond grateful every day for how she helps us meet our CLC grant goals and brings warmth and hope to our children, families, and staff. We have a round of applause, please. All right. And next up is Amber LaRue. And if I could have Ms. Geisregan step forward as well? We are extremely fortunate to have Amber LaRue as our school-to-home liaison from Lakeland Family Resource Center to help many of our at-risk students succeed. She is compassionate and develops meaningful relationships between the school and families. She is always going above and beyond to ensure students are getting their work done, communicates regularly with teachers. Okay?[252.48][252.48](laughing) And assists in organizing family events. We are so grateful to have Amber in our building to help our students do better in school. A round of applause for Amber, please. All right. And then if I could have Melissa Smith step forward with Ms. Geisregan again, please. Melissa makes an outstanding contribution to the Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math program, also known as STEAM. She is dedicated to securing resources to enhance students' learning, 3D printing, vinyl printing, robotics, coding, and more. She has also been vital in collecting donations from the Spooner Wesleyan Church Vacation Bible School for our bike intervention program and for our middle school concert attire. Her enthusiasm for teaching and her dedication to equip students with 21-century skills are commendable. Round of applause, please. All right. If I could have Shonda Stafford come forward with Mr. Berghammer. Shonda has evolved in many things here at SES, including science committee representative members of our elementary leadership team and serves as a PBIS coach. She has been a lead member on our PBIS team, organizing rail's rallies, creating a student leadership team, gathering donations, running meetings, et cetera. Mrs. Stafford is also an amazing fourth-grade teacher who prides herself in building positive relationships with her students. She possesses wonderful classroom management skills and continues to find new methods and strategies to enhance student learning. Shonda shows up every day with a positive attitude and is very respected by her colleagues. Round of applause, please. And the last one, if I could have Ms. Geisregan step forward, please. And any middle school staff that is present would be great. Members of the SMS staff would like to recognize our principal, Ms. Geisregan, for her outstanding work at our school. In the past several months, Ms. Geisregan has worked tirelessly to support the student, staff, and community through many trying situations. She is responsive, hardworking, and always goes above and beyond. We are honored to work with Principal Geisregan at the Spooner Middle School. Round of applause, please. All right. We're moving on to item B, the referendum project update. And Mr. Kunkel is here from CSATEN.
Good evening. I'll be providing brief summaries on the construction updates of both the elementary school, middle school, the summer 2022 project schedule, a brief summary on the overall budget at this point, as well as some additional scope for you to consider at your next board meeting. So for the elementary addition, all masonry block has been completed. Clear story windows are now installed at the cafeteria. A majority of ductwork, plumbing, heating, cooling piping, as well as associated insulation, has been installed. A majority of door frames, metal studs, and drywall has also been installed, as well as taping, painting. All rough-ins are now completed. And then there has been onsite scope walkthroughs conducted with several contractors to complete work within the next few months. And again, this is something that all took place over the last month. Over the next month, we'll be looking to install drop ceilings, which will start next week. Lighting fixtures and diffusers will follow the ceiling grids as they're installed. All ductwork, piping, and associated insulation is scheduled to be completed. A majority of all mechanical components should also be completed, and that would mean we'll be able to turn on the permanent HVAC, heating, and cooling systems hopefully here by the end of this month. Installation of operable windows, our schedule will begin being installed next week. Had a small manufacturer issue for the materials that were originally sent. Then 4K restroom tile work may start over the next few weeks, depending on availability of the flooring contractor. Do fully anticipate turning over this area prior to June 10th, last day of school this summer, or this spring. Any questions on the elementary school?
Nope.
For the middle school addition, over the last month, as we need to get going following Christmas break, cold temperatures kind of largely affected some of the main work we had to do to keep moving on the addition, and that was largely saw cutting with wet methods. So with the temperatures and equipment for using wet methods, we finally did find a day to get that work 100% completed. Do expect things to move awfully quick now. The south and east wall block and wood blocking at that addition has been completed. Majority of wood blocking wrapping on those walls for vapor barrier has also been completed. And then, as mentioned, the saw cutting into the additional west wall of the old gym has been completed. Over the next month, starting tomorrow, the structural steel that needs to go in that west wall of the gym, old gym, that should be set tomorrow. Remainder of structural steel in the rest of the addition is scheduled for next Monday and Tuesday. The remainder of block work, as well as vapor barrier for the addition, is scheduled to be completed this month. If all goes well, we should have a roof on that addition by the end of this month. And though a bit of a push, I still see a definite possibility we can turn over that addition by June 10th as well. Any questions on the middle school addition? Work to take place in the Anthols Gym. Taping and painting will begin next Friday, as there's a four-day weekend, so that'll go through Friday and Monday, or through Monday. Then the next scheduled work for that area is going to be over spring break, as well as the adjoining weekends. They're hopeful they'll be complete with the taping, painting within that time period. Any questions on the Anthols Gym? Bipolar ionization, this past month, it's about 85% of the units have been installed. The high school is 100% complete. The elementary school should be complete by the end of next week, and then the middle school the following week after that. Once all the units are set, they'll work with the electrician to get those all energized. So hopefully, over the next month, all that will be fully operational as well. Any question on that scope?
No.
For summer of 2022, the preliminary schedule has been built. Don't really see any major issues with getting all the work that was guaranteed as part of the referendum complete through summer. Right now, we're really eyeing the first week of August for all that work. There's a couple of contractors that are going to be quite busy. We've worked with them very closely. One has no issue manning up. The second one, I don't see either, but they do have a large project in Barron that they can bounce back and forth as needed. Very confident with the timeframes that were provided to the board. We can maintain that. As we're moving forward now, we are starting to look at contingency projects, and, you know, if anything might spill into the school year, might have to take place next summer, I would look for it to be that work versus what was guaranteed as part of the referendum. And again, it's, you know, going to be completely on time for, as originally discussed, it's been quite the lead time issues, manpower issues getting to this point, but we are largely away from that lead time issues with everything being stored onsite or at their warehouses. As for budget update, there's going to be a more detailed update. I'm thinking we'll look at the April COW meeting for that, to give you something that's much more detailed as we get pricing on some of this work that's been approved, make sure we're providing the accurate numbers, but we are well north of $1 million in contingency right now. And we also have a sizable amount in variances, which would be planned adds. That does not account for that well north of $1 million number. Any questions on the budget?
Any other additional questions for Mr. Kunkel?
Just really quickly here, so some additional scope that we'd like you to consider for the next board meeting. Our general trades contractor provide proposals versus bidding on bid packages after the fact as we look to secure that work. They did not account for the design-build portion of that scope as far as doors, frames, and hardware considered. So we'll have those numbers to you by the end of this week. It's, we've held firm on a lot of other contractors as they've provided bids and, you know, refused cost escalators, but would like you to consider that scope just so we can complete out what was promised to the community. And that will be north of the amount that we discuss for going to the board approval.
Okay. So are we looking to have a consensus to move that forward?
So your intent is to ask the board to take action on that additional scope at next week's regular meeting, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And we'll have that information?
Will be definitely at the end of this week.
Okay.
Need to break out those prices a little more so you're getting accurate numbers.
But it exceeds the $60,000 authorization that we can do?
That is correct. And that would have been all the doors, frames, hardware that was not pulled into the full design construction documents.
All right. So we may make sure that you have any questions regarding that information that you get to, who you need to get to, to get those questions answered prior to Monday's meeting. Okay.
Any additional questions?
Nope. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're moving on to item C, which is the COVID-19 Safe at School update. Mr. Hopkey.
Good evening. I'm ready to share some information about a great topic that everyone loves. Just, it's just an update on COVID. I'm not looking at making any changes to our plan, but just giving you an update as to where we're at based on CDC and DPI guidance, as well as county. All right. So right now, what we have in our plan is positive cases will be excluded from school as directed by Washburn County Public Health. So we were given a specific timeline from the county as far as positive cases, and we're also receiving notifications from Washburn County by email, and then we're in constant contact via phone on those test results. And then the second one was that students and staff who are household contact to a positive case of COVID-19 will be notified by Washburn County Health Department. Return to school and work dates will be provided by the local health department. That is also from our plan. And once again, we're getting those notifications, and we've been providing opportunities for students and staff to get tested. So. So some of the expectations that we've gotten from Washburn County, we actually got a graphic this time. It was very clear-cut. It was nice. It was laid out for households that were willing to mask and households that were not willing to mask. And it laid it out very specifically, day zero symptoms begin, or that's the date of the positive test. Day six, if they were masking, they could return from quarantine and then mask for the following five days. And then household members were released from quarantine from that day 11. When they're not masking, basically, it's extending it for that 10 days that they're quarantined, and then coming back on that day 11, and then household members released on day 21. So definitely an opportunity for reducing the timeline for students and staff to return. So just further explanations that go into this, don't have to quarantine if you're symptom-free, but you should wear a mask for those 10 days. So in other words, if a person has been vaccinated and they're a close contact, as long as they're symptom-free, they can still remain coming to work, coming to school, but making sure that they're masked. Ages five to seven, same thing. And then if you've had a positive within the past 90 days, follow the same guidelines as well. All right. So communication. I said, Washburn County's been sending out that notification to families as well as us. I know it's been kind of sporadic just because of the numbers, but definitely, we're trying to stay on top of that. With Washburn County, they're confirming it for us, and if we have questions, we're in contact with them to make sure we've got good information. Some of the concerns that we're having right now is people that are taking at-home tests. There's no real good way to confirm it, so we have to take it on people's word that, yes, they had a positive or negative, you know, and we're still trying to track that. The big thing is with attendance, being sure that we're getting accurate information to track for attendance, because I know that some of the buildings have had some students and family members that might have been taking advantage of the situation, just trying to lock in attendance-wise what's accurate. And then as far as close contacts within the school, I know we're trying to send out notifications to families when there has been an exposure, but the time that we have to identify students is pretty limited. So do what we can, but we're limited on what we can do. So, all right.
Any questions for Mr. Hopkey?
Yeah, Pete? On that first part where it says, "Directed by Washburn County Public Health."
Yep.
Is that being mandated? Is that a mandate from the Washburn County? Is that a suggestion?
They, as far as I can tell from that, it's very clear what they say as far as when they can return, so.
So you'd say, as far as you can tell, it's mandated by Washburn County?
Again, I mean, that's what I'm going off from is that graphic, so I can't...
But we have not received any direct order, correct?
No.
Okay.
No. If you'd like a copy of that graphic that I received, I can certainly do that, so.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions for Mr. Hopkey at this time?
All right. Thank you for having me up here. All right.
So now we're moving on to item D. We are receiving and placing that information on file. I'm very sorry. Item D is the SES Midyear AGR Performance Objectives Report. Mr. Berghammer and staff.
All right. I was able to have a few staff members join me tonight. And they'll, Mrs. Johnson from kindergarten, Mr. Carlton is home ill, and Mrs. Swan in second grade, and Mrs. Wilson in third grade. Though, the Achievement Gap Reduction Program, the AGR program is a grant program which allows a participating school to meet the obligation of its five-year contract by implementing one of three strategies or a combination of these strategies in every kindergarten through grade three classroom. We focus on two and three, the instructional coaching for teachers and maintaining a 18-1 or 30-2 classroom ratios. The AGR program requires a participating school to create performance objectives, including reducing the achievement gap between low-income students in that school and students in the same grade and subject statewide. The 21-22 focus ties in with some of our school-wide goals. Focus of the 21-22 school year is vocabulary for both ELA and math. We identified vocabulary as an area of a need of improvement going into this school year. Students need a better understanding of grade-level vocabulary through our building. Improvement in this area would give our students a better opportunity to be successful in these core areas. Many of the critical verbs are used in the directions and questions in the various standardized testing that our students participate in. And vocabulary and verb understanding are obviously fundamental skills for advanced learning and performance. Some of the considerations, things that you folks already know, but again, lots of inconsistencies throughout the beginning of the school year, students missing multiple days, staff members missing multiple days and sometimes weeks. Our fall testing window, which is usually done early in September, was pushed back a little bit due to attendance issues. Some of those were taking place in the beginning of October. And then various programming was pushed back due to trying to keep students in their home rooms. Again, interventions and win times weren't able to start till between Thanksgiving and Christmas break. Again, things that you guys are already well aware of, just some considerations. Our Building Action Plan, so the important things. Our daily reading, win and math win times for each grade level, 30 minutes of interventions, again, based on some data. Grade-level critical verb learning and assessment, this is part of our building-wide SLO that our teaching staff are directly a part of. Actively researching a new ELA resource. Our ELA curriculum teams across the district have been working hard researching and piloting resources to help the district make the best choice possible for students and staff, and then continually support our staff through professional development opportunities and collaboration. So those are some of the things that we're doing as an elementary to keep moving our kids in the right direction. Mrs. Johnson will talk a little bit about the kindergarten?
By the end of this school year, 80% of our students will meet the spring benchmark with rhyming, according to FastBridge. Baseline was 73% of our students. Right now, we're at 80%. So, so far, so good, but we'll keep working on that because that's only a standard in kindergarten. We're going to keep pushing and kind of expanding there, if it's maybe one syllable, two syllables, things like that. Math, in this school year, 80% will meet the spring benchmark, identifying numbers. They were at 73% baseline. They're at 65% now, and that's because it's more rigorous, it's later on in the school year. So better than 50% have it, and we'll just keep continuing to work on whole group, differentiated centers, and things like that, continue pushing towards that goal.
First grade, I will talk a little bit about that. Just the idea, though, giving you guys the baseline of what happened early in the school year, and then January, where we are, and then it will be, again, tested in May, and just trying to make this, all of this information as simple as we can by just giving you the options of what does it mean, and then at each grade level, letting you know what our plan is to improve our numbers. So in first grade, by the end of the school year, 80% of our students will meet the spring benchmark of sight words. The baseline was 43%, and in January, we tested at 36%. What does this mean? In the fall, the students are expected to know 17 sight words in a minute, and then when we get to the mid-year, which is a winter, that expectation jumps to 50 words. And then again, in the spring, then that expectation jumps to another 15 to 65 words. So you can see, from the fall to the middle of the year, there's quite a jump from 17 to 50 in expectations. Again, first grade, our plan is to focus on the five sight words a week universally. Universally means as a full classroom, with the four classrooms, all of those groups participating, and then provide materials for optional work at home if parents choose. Math, the 80% of our students meet the spring benchmark with their decomposing, as measured by FastBridge assessment, 75 were at that benchmark in October, and then 57% met that benchmark in January. Again, what does that mean? Most students have the foundational skills, as shown in our baseline score. Students need to develop fluency. So some of the students are using their fingers to count, and in a timed test, we know they have the skills, but again, the fluency piece is where we need to continue our work on that. And then what is our plan? In the first grade math, we will continue using our curriculum and teaching with fidelity, and we also plan to work on increasing student confidence levels so they are more comfortable taking the FastBridge assessment. Again, just a little bit of an identification that sometimes our students just get a little nervous when it comes to the standardized testing piece. That's first, that's first grade.
In second grade, our goal is by the end of the school year, 80% of our students will meet the spring benchmark with their A reading portion of the test, which is phonics and fluency, and also comprehension, so as a general reading test, as measured by the FastBridge assessment. The baseline at the beginning of the year was 41% of the students at benchmark, and in January, we were at 46% of students at benchmark. This means that less than half of the second grade students are reading at grade level, but again, as they noted in first grade, they have made nice progress. The goal just keeps moving and moving, and so we're looking at that. Our plan is to provide individualized instruction in phonics and fluency based on FastBridge intervention recommendations, so you can go right in there. They'll show you your students. They'll give you an intervention that you can work on during small group time in your classroom. In second grade, and I think at the whole elementary school, we're very excited, too, about getting a new resource. When you look at the resources, we've been looking at the research-based resources, and just the level of rigor in the activities is definitely different than what we've been able to kind of provide, coming up with things on our own. So we're looking forward to that. In math, by the end of the school year, 80% of our students will meet the spring benchmark with their A math, which is just all of the parts of math, measured by FastBridge assessment. Our baseline was 57% of the students at benchmark, and in January, we're at 74% of our students at the benchmark. So our second grade universal instruction is meeting the needs of most of our students. We got Chromebooks for all the students this year, and there's a program called ZERN that goes right along with our curriculum, and they can manipulate the things right on the computer. They can go back and fix it if they don't understand it, and so we have done the whole group instruction, but it's been really nice for them to have that piece as well. So our plan is to continue to deliver instruction using our resource with fidelity, and then use that as a companion for reinforcement, and we also do have our win time for math
Third grade?
So our goal for reading, by the end of our school year, 80% of our students will meet the spring benchmark with their A reading, phonics and fluency, as measured by FastBridge assessment. Baseline was thirty-six percent of students at the benchmark. In January, it's forty-five percent of students at the benchmark. So what does this mean for us? More than half of the students are not meeting the grade-level expectations in phonics and fluency, meaning they have not met the third grade benchmark yet. So our plan is to address fluency. We will continue to have weekly fluency checks along with daily practice. We will better implement FastBridge phonics interventions to support any student needs that we have. For math, by the end of our school year, eighty percent of our students will meet the spring benchmark with their A math, general math, as measured by FastBridge assessment. Our baseline is sixty-six percent of students at the benchmark, fifty-nine of students at the benchmark is in January. What does this mean? More than half of the students are meeting the grade-level expectations in general math. Our plan, then, moving forward, is that third grade will continue to differentiate using our math resources during math win, what they need, to meet the needs of our students. In addition, students will be supported by the resource Eureka.
And just for your knowledge, our 4K in our fourth grade also take the FastBridge test, they go through the data, just like our, our K through three classes do. AGR doesn't require us to include 4K in fourth grade in this, so, but just letting you know. So in, in conclusion, we have seen some percentage scores increase, and we have seen some areas that we know that are still in need of improvement. These goals and this assessment piece are obviously just a few things we use to help us make decisions for student learning. I have been in every classroom in our building and have seen many examples of student learning, and I've seen many examples of our educators working hard for kids. Through staff collaboration, continued efforts to use our data, and communication with parents, I feel very good about our pathway for student success. I have the utmost confidence and respect in our staff to get their jobs done to the best of their abilities. I'd like to thank our staff that helped put this data together, and to our staff that came in here tonight to present. We all are hopeful and look forward to a great and uninterrupted rest of the school year. And lastly, thank you. The SES staff would like to thank all of our families for the opportunity to work with you and your child. We also thank you for all your support and patience throughout the beginning of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We all look forward to doing the best job we can, not only educating our children, but also keeping them safe and happy throughout the remainder of the school year.
Is there any questions for any Mrs. Usleson?
Just as a whole, I guess I'm going to ask, I understand that the baseline was October? That's when the baseline assessment was?
Yeah, that's when we gave the test, was the beginning part of October. Typically, it's in mid-September, we just had lots of attendance issues and things like that.
So in, in the timeframe, whether it's October or whatever, does every student take it? I assume they do, so the whole class in, in the entirety is figured into those statistics?
Yes. And so at that point, so when this, this particular slideshow was put together, we were missing a few students from the January test. Ultimately, they all were tested, and data was, you know, retrieved, but at the time of the slideshow, we were still missing up to four or five students per classroom, just because, again, of illness and various things.
Can I ask? So overall, I mean, it's purely subjective at this point, and I just, interestingly enough, the second grade level, I think, hasn't had, or everybody below second grade hasn't had a real, normal school year. And I guess, do you see those numbers as implications of that? Or, and that said, as it goes forward, if you end the year behind, not meeting the eighty percent benchmark or fluency, how does that play into the advancing school years? So you start at a reduced level, so it, so how do you account with your curriculum to build upon a reduced level of understanding?
Yeah, go on.
I think what you're asking is, first, how do we know where we're at, where they're at, how do we move them forward?
Yes.
That's part of our sta, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yep.
That's part of our standards, that's, that's part of what we're doing, that's why we track that. So if they are going into first grade, I'm kindergarten, and they're not there, we know where they're still lacking, they pick up where we left off. And we have had a couple of rough years, just with all the sickness. So we do that in our whole building. That's our standard-based grading, so we know exactly where they are, how to move them. Right, but I mean, that's, yes, that's one.
Yeah, even our assessments help to really identify or pinpoint the areas that they might be lacking, and then win time is designed for that. So it's what they need, they're grouped based on what they need, and we, we do a lot of grouping based on this testing to get them where they need.
Reading in particular, there are a few students that I, they left in kindergarten in March, their parents chose to keep them home when it was an option last year. We're very far behind in reading. They're able to go to tier three with Mrs. Blues. We check them, we keep progress monitoring them, some of them are moving out of Mrs. Blues's program, and then other children are able to take advantage of that. We have another program called Lexia, which is a computerized program that students are able to use, and we've, in second grade, we've been able to give that to an extra ten students, and so that's very individualized, so we're doing that. And so every so often, we do look at their win scores, we look at who's doing well, so some students are making more progress, we're able to move them up a little bit, some students are falling behind, not making as much progress. We can put them in a, a group that's working on more basic phonetic skills or more fluency skills, and then as they get that chunk, then they can move on to working more on comprehension. So that win time is, is really where we work on that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Allen.
Yes, my, my question is this. First of all, just want to make sure I understand correctly. When we're looking at benchmarks, like you gave the example this evening, a fall benchmark of being able to read seventeen sight words, and then mid-year, ninety days later, into the fifties. Who, who sets those benchmarks? Are those, is that something you determine locally, or is that something that, that you're given?
That's out of our hands.
That's a FastBridge testing, yeah.
Thank you.
So my, I have one, one question. When we talk about that eighty percent mark, is with where we are now and where we're looking at to the end of the year, is there, is that really an obtainable goal?
I think that, I mean, there's certainly a possibility, because again, some of that, you know, i- if certain, a group first grade, if they were missing five or six students when we put this data together, that could obviously greatly affect the data depending on who those students are. So I think, again, with our staff and the direction that we're going, and the, you know, if we can stay consistent throughout the rest of the school year, I think we have a real good shot of staying down that pathway and hopefully at least getting close to those goals.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Does anyone have any other questions?
It's not a question.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you for the work that the teachers do, and I think it's been a challenging year, or years for many people, everybody, but I think it's, it's commendable, the time that you put in, and, yeah, I guess that's all I've got.
Any other, any further? Okay, thank you very much for your presentation, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item E, discuss the SHS ACT exam plan. Mr. Scherz? You should be.
Should have received our plan and, and the rationale for what we're doing ACT-wise. Last year, we were able to have our juniors on that Wednesday that we gave the test, and again, that proved to be very, a very good situation for those students. One of the problems that we have, well, we have lots of problems with the ACT, but one of the major issues is making sure that we're complying with all the things that ACT requires in order to be able to use that as an accurate test. We also, as you can see, we're trying to create an environment for students to perform their best. This is a high-stake test, as you guys know from our report card, and we want students to be able to perform the best they can. The test itself takes all day, and it really requires a, an atmosphere conducive of taking a test. So that's why we are giving you the information, that we're going to have juniors come in on the eighth of March, and it'll be just juniors that day. Other students and families will be informed, again, like last year, of what we're doing on that day and why we're doing that process. Questions?
Your, my question would be, you're talking about doing only juniors in the school, the rest of the students within the high school will not have school that day.
Will not attend that day, yes.
Elementary and middle schools will be still in session. Thank you.
I just have a follow-up on that. So was the ACT test pre-scheduled for that day?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I guess I was just thinking that, you know, it'd be a valuable time for other kids to be there if there were other opportunities where the school wasn't in session for those juniors to take it, like, for example, a Saturday or something, if it's not teachers administering and having to be here.
We have a two-day window of when we can give that test. Students can take the test on their own, outside of school, but, but again, as of two thousand and sixteen, every student now takes the ACT, whether we appreciate that or not, that's a fact, so again, we want to make sure that every student has an opportunity to perform the best they can. And again, that, that atmosphere has proved very, well, one of the things it really does is it helps them understand how important it is because of the time we're taking for them.
And then what do you do, what do the other grade levels do? Do they have online learning that day?
They would not, because we use all of our teachers as proctors during that time.
Okay. Is there any other questions for Mr. Scherz regarding that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll receive and place that information on file. You are. Team, I suppose we'll just stay right there. So we're, we're moving on to item F, is discuss the SMS and SHS honor roll, and if Ms. Geesregan would also step forward?
Well, I'll do mine first.
Okay.
Because it's the easy one.
All right.
You received a memo on it. We, we changed some verbiage due to the fact that most of our classes are semester classes now, so you'll see there are a little change in verbiage of how, how we place that in our handbook, but again, for us, because we've, we've always been on a grade, grade point average system, it's not hard to re-implement the process. So again, questions? Looks like you have a question.
I have one. The only reason I'm questioning the three point six, isn't National Honor Society also based on three point five and above?
It certainly could be, but, but based on the history of, of how it's been in Spooter School District, it was three point six, and I don't know the, to be honest, total logistics of the process, other than recognizing high honors and honors, so.
I just think we should, it should be consistent. If a student can have national, be on a National Honor Society, am I wrong or am I right? Because somewhat, some, a kid can be a National Honor Society person, and then they won't even have an A, they wouldn't be recognized because they could be three point five four. I'm just, I'm just wondering if it should be consistent, I'm asking.
Would you look into that for us?
I'm sorry.
We can do whatever you want.
Just wondering.
We'll bring it back.
Would you please, that would be great if you could, if you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Scherz? Okay, all right.
So just to be clear, you're looking at three point five?
Yes.
Based on National Honor Society?
Because if they can be in the National Honor Society at three point five.
Okay, let me check into that.
Just let, and I don't know.
One of the things I'll check into is I want to be consistent with schools around us too of, of, and, and again, that's what I saw in the process, school districts that, in our conference that were using the honor roll, were still using the same criteria that we use, and I'm guessing that's where it stemmed from, but that's just a guess. So we'll handle it.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Geesregan?
All right. So just a little background knowledge for you, back in July, you had asked that Mr. Scherz and I explore the opportunity for this honor roll, so tonight I'm going to share some insider information on our grading practices at the middle school and how it may or may not work for us. So our current grading scale is a standards-based scale, which is used to monitor students' progress and achievements while focusing on helping students learn and reach their highest potential. The purpose of a standards-based grading is to identify what a student knows or is able to do in relation to pre-established learning targets. So right now, if you look at the screen, that's currently what we operate off of. It's a one, two, and a three proficiency scale. I did some research, looking at what other schools on a proficiency, proficiency scale such as ours, and there's no good model to recognize honor roll within a one, two, and a three proficiency scale. Our current scale doesn't address a low or a high, so I don't, if that makes sense. So I put this in there as a conversion table for you to see, and I highlighted the frame so that you can identify, there's our scale, and there's no, there's no bottom, and there's no top. So it's really hard to try to find that high honor or an honor, or like what most middle schools do, they do an A or a B honor roll, is typically what you see, which is similar to a high or an honor roll process at the high school. So recommendations to consider, that if you want to go to an honor roll, if the board would like to see that happen, then we'd have to look at considering changing our scale. So at the middle school, staff feel it doesn't adequately meet the needs currently for our students because of that no bottom and no real top. So most standards-based scales are a zero to four, and they reflect students' increasing skill or mastery. The middle school staff think that there is a better way to address that need, and that's going back to that, you know, looking at that letter grade going A, B, C, D, F as our reporting practice, but in our practice within our system, we would still use that zero-to-four scale for developing our units, how we internally are doing our work, but for reporting out, we would use that A, B, C, D, F. Part of that would be so that we could easily fit that A, B honor roll, like we were just talking about, you could develop that criteria. And how would that, I'm sorry, I stuck the high schools in there so you guys could see, I didn't know if you needed that visual, but that's why I stuck that in there, not that I'm saying we need to go to that complex weighted scale. We don't, we don't, we can, simple, it's good, we're good. So are possible, like I was saying, that A, B criteria would be more aligned with most middle schools? And how would that change or benefit our students, ultimately helping students prepare for high school by bridging the gaps, or as what we're identifying, and Mr. Scherz can attest to this, we have a mismatch in our current grading now. So as our kids are transitioning up, we are definitely seeing that miss, there's an alignment issue. So it addresses that low and that high end of our student performance as well, and then it aligns, and I'll use this term as aligning our grading symbols. I mean, that's essentially what grading is, it's a symbol, so it's the philosophy or the thought behind what you're trying to convey. So in our minds, as we teach and as we do our practicing, we look at it from that lens of the standard, our kids mastering those standards, but on the reporting side, it can look, that, that's where that conversion table kind of helps you get that good visualization. Yeah, and it's our job to raise the bar, right? We don't have that top end, it's missing, and we do have kids that are there at that top end, and the highest we can go is a three. So it's sort of a dis- So it's sort of a disservice when we, we want to enrich kids' learning, we want to get them there, but then we also have some of those kids at that bottom end who could do nothing, zero, for an entire quarter and still achieve a 1. So that's tough too, because that sends a false message. So that's where we're at. And I added all this, like, how would that affect our building? Of course, just like with any change, there's a domino effect, so I just put that in there just so you know that there would be a little bit of a domino, it would change criteria for athletics, it would change presidential award, because presidential award actually goes based off of letter grades and GPA, and Ashley has done a phenomenal job at calculating and figuring it out with the standards base that we have with the 1, 2, and a 3. Not an easy process at all, but she does it, so it sure would clean up that process as well, and just a clear picture for families and students to really see where they're at. Did include a timeline. I've talked to the team, I talked to our leadership team and staff and just said, if we had to go with a change, how do you feel we could, how fast could we accomplish this? And we felt like if you approved a change in a grading scale, we could likely come up with that definitive scale to present to you for March. And then, of course, we'd need some time to really comb through our handbook to make those changes because our handbook is ultimately the biggest change. There are many things that would factor in. And then hopefully, the plan would be to implement in the fall and launch that by sharing with parents during open house and prior, these changes so that they were aware of it ahead of time. And if we had an approval, I was thinking today on my drive in, even our Title I, we always have our Title I family meeting in April, May-ish, we could also introduce, if there was a change already approved, some of that stuff. So, questions? Yes.
I have one question. When you were looking at other schools, were most of them on the A, B, C, D realm?
They're all over the board. I have Chippewa Falls Handbook. They have a grading for learning handbook, they have a 0 to 4. I have not found a school in the area on a 1, 2, and a 3. We are very unique in that sense. I've not seen that before. Most schools are 0 to 4 or letter grade. I mean, so we're kind of unique.
Mr. Johnson? Oh, I'm sorry.
In response, mainly because of the honor roll, that you're trying to make it fit into an honor roll system, or were there other concerns with standards-based grading that year?
Both. Part was because the board had given the directive in July to look at the honor roll to match with the high school, so that was part of the process. But since I've started in Spooner, that's, I've heard a lot from the staff about how it's so boxed in that we're not meeting that high, we're not meeting that low, that we're on that 1, 2, and a 3. That's why I don't, you know, I wasn't here, 2015, I did a little bit of research, 2015, 16 was the last school year that implemented this, the regular grading, and I actually have a staff member's child's report card. And that was the letter grade A, B, and they did the A, B, C. So the scale you saw there came right from that student's report card. And they did do a standards-based score but for successful learning behaviors, so they used that piece, which is interesting. But no, I've heard from staff a number of times how it's very challenging because there's such a wide discrepancy between a 1, a 2, and a 3 score. So your highest-flying students are really, they're boxed in, or your 2s, there's such a big gap. It's tough.
And I don't necessarily know that they understand once they move from middle school to high school what that A, B, C, D even means.
No, what we've noticed is like, when they're at a 3, they think they're As. And then when they get to the high school, we're seeing they're like average B, C students.
And they don't understand.
And they don't understand that, right.
Kind of concerned with the, with standards-based grading, you're looking at, are they meeting the standard?
Correct.
It seems artificial to convert that to an A or a B.
Mm-hmm.
You want to know, yes, they're meeting the standard, which would be a 3 if you want to say they're exceeding the standard, that could be a 4. Is it necessary to artificially convert it to an A, B, C that aligns to a percentage?
Mm-hmm.
When we're not averaging scores and making a percentage, I think we get a lot more information for students by looking at, what are the skills for that standard? Where's my student? Have they mastered those skills? I would hate to kind of go backwards. I think the staff has done a lot of work over the years to teach toward those standards and to communicate that information with parents.
Mm-hmm.
I would hate to go backwards with that just to make it fit into an honor roll system if that's the.
I would say too, a lot of our staff, or not staff, parents don't understand the standards-based grading scale either.
I did when my kids were in school.
My question is, you're not really changing the standards-based grading part of it, you're converting that to make it allowable to fit into an honor roll system. So you're not really changing the standard. You're still going to know what they need to know, if they know it, and when they know it.
In our, in our practice, is what I'm saying, like, as we're, as they're teaching, they're developing their lessons, they're doing their assessments, and our PLCs, we're meeting and looking at the data, we're looking at it through the lens of a 0, 1, sorry, 0, 1, 2, 3, 4 scale, but for reporting out purposes to families, what they're used to or what they understand is the A, B, C, D scale, A, B, C, D, F scale. So reporting would look in that fashion where our practice would still be on that standards practice. Does that make sense? And I see what you're saying.
I think we could.
It's hard.
Maybe it would be more important to help people understand what that means, what a 4, a 3, if you add a 4.
But we only have a 1, 2, and a 3.
But if you add the 4 or what the 3, what those mean, rather than, because we're familiar with As, because that's what we had when we were in school 20, 30 years ago.
So are you suggesting changing our scale to a 0, 1, 2, 3, 4?
If that's what you're saying is lacking, that you're not getting that.
We don't have a top and we don't have a bottom.
Top and a bottom.
Yep.
Those could add a 4, add a 0, if that's helpful with communicating that information.
And you still would be able, would you still be able to convert that into that honor roll system to be able to see what those, where those kids lie?
I would have to, I'm not a Skyward guru person, so it would have to be certainly conversation with Skyward to see like a power law, like how would they calculate that into a power law, kind of like calculating overtime to get that average.
Well, the reason we went to this at the beginning was because it was, we've heard overwhelmingly from the community and from others that the 1, 2, 3 was not what the community wanted, parents wanted, heard it from educators. That's why we are where we are with some of the honor roll and some of this stuff, just to give it a little bit of context. And because there was that jump from middle school to high school, there was a big gap there going back. So this has been a long, a long process for some of these things to get to where we're at, just for some of that context from the past. So I appreciate.
We're seeing a movement in education to go towards standards-based grading. We maybe were on the front end of it and there's still more.
Based on.
The concern was though, we had high flyers, as she was stating, that they were boxed, they weren't able, in that system, be able to excel beyond that 1, 2, 3. I think that was some, some of that issues was where that really limited some of that flex, for that gaps, or from 0 to the high flyers.
The only point I want to make though is if we consider changing that, the middle school to a 0, 1, 2, 3, 4, which I'm not opposed to, just keep in mind then the elementary would have to change their scale because they are also operating on a 1, 2, and a 3 scale. So that, then that would change two buildings. Just putting it out there.
Does it have to be the same at the elementary and the?
I think that would be confusing for families as well as grading practices and just thinking mind-wise for all teachers at one building to be operating on one proficiency scale with another building operating on another. That's my two cents.
Mr. Johnson?
I was around back when we brought this in, and it was definitely a hot topic back then. It was something that took us weeks and months and many, many hours to sit down and discuss. One of the areas that I remembered was that our staff was all behind it at the time, and I felt that it is working, our grades are improving at our schools, that this is, as you said, going backwards. It's almost like taking it and throwing it out like it's not going to work because certain people aren't, feel they're not being recognized. I don't believe that we're keeping, preventing people from learning. I think we are teaching people and they are learning. They might not be getting recognized as they had in the past, but they know how they're doing, their parents know how they're doing, and you as the staff know how they're doing. So the reasons for the change, I never heard anything discussed from you about equity among students and why we went that way, because we had to go back and learn at the standards base, where in the past, we had a standard where you had an English course, you took, you studied chapter 1, at two weeks later, you took the test, you got A through D, then the next Monday, you start chapter 2. And what this was doing, I remembered, was this was halting all of that from happening to say, Johnny needs help, Johnny got a D, he's not proficient. We need to take Johnny and work with him a little longer. While the other students might excel, we still come back and work with him until he becomes proficient. That's our goal, is to educate people and make sure that they become proficient, not necessarily getting an A, B, but we got them from the D up to the B anyhow. But if we just take a letter grade like we had done 30 years ago and just say, you got a D, next month, we're going, next week, we're moving to the next topic, next chapter, at the end of 10 weeks, you got all those Ds, guess what, Johnny, you just failed. But in reality, what we need to do is we need to go back and see, we are here to teach students, we should do whatever it is to teach them, teach them to become proficient. There's, I'd look at, I look at the honor rolls themselves, you can look at the stress and anxiety that's put into students and put on students to make an honor roll, and they know what it is that they have to do to make that honor roll. Could be good in some families, could be bad in some families, creates a lot of stress that I don't think teenagers should have to deal with myself. But I'm going to go back to my question and say, at what point does that grade stick with that student forever versus he gets to go back and make sure that he learns that stuff, or are we just going to forget about it and say, you missed your chance to learn, we're going to the next topic? And the problem is when you get into some of these math classes, if you don't know your division, you're not going to figure out calculus. So, I mean, we got to get back to the beginning, and that's why we're getting, in the past, we had students that were coming into our high school level that were quite a few years behind where they were, and that's why we decided to go with standard-based grading, to help those students in the lower levels get caught up, and that's why we kept the high school at the, where it was, so they can be competitive with the communities around us, and they can do well on their ACT testing. I'm just questioning why we put all of that time into implementing this and all the hard reasons for doing it, because we really cared about educating our students and doing the best for our students to make sure they learned. Not necessarily they got their name on this plaque or in the hallway on this board, but to make sure the students learn. And I'm really frustrated that we spent all that time and we just spent 10 minutes figuring out why we should dismantle it.
Well, I appreciate what you said, but the board passed this a long time ago with all of that argument, and it was passed to go in this direction. So unless you want to go backwards and then revote and recome up with it, this is the, this is what was passed in that board meeting, was to get into this direction, and they're just doing the work of what was passed at the board level.
Thank you.
So I appreciate the argument.
The board did not decide to do anything of that sort. They decided to look at it and bring it back and talk, and that's where we are tonight.
Mm-hmm.
That's what we decided.
Okay, I have some teachers in the audience, if, Mrs. Thummel, if you want to start it out first, and then Mr. Smith and Mrs. Bush.
I just wanted to, I'm a huge fan of standards-based learning. I think it's incredibly vital and it gives the parents a lot more information. What I think we're looking at doing is changing the way that we are informing the parents of that. So we're changing it to show them an A, B, C, D, F, but standards-based grading is more than just that. It's looking at the, when the child is able to get to the level that we're looking at. So if I give a test and a child fails it, I do some re-teaching, they get the chance with standards-based grading to go back and show me later on that they understand it, and then I report that they understand the standard. So with standards-based grading, we can still be telling the parents, for algebra, they're getting an A, for geometry, they're getting a C. We can still break it down by the standard and tell them all of that and use all the philosophies that Rick Wermly taught us when he came here and talked to us about all of that. The, giving them second chances to come back and show what they learned, taking the time to go back and reteach them and not penalizing them for not knowing it when we wanted them to know it at the first time. So standard-based grading has a whole bunch of different qualities that we take on as the teachers. It's the philosophy that we've adapted as the middle school for many, many, many years. In my mind, this is just changing it so, first of all, it gives us more flexibility to report it, because a 2 is really wide. There's some really low 2s and some really high 2s, and we struggle with that. We feel like it doesn't give parents enough information. So if we did A through F, it breaks that up more and also gives the opportunity for the honor rolls. I feel like it just gives more, we can still give all the information, we can still teach standards-based and assess standards-based. We're just reporting it in a way that the community has said, this is the way we understand it. That's my take on it.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
You may best to stay on topic.
Thank you.
Me too. I don't support honor roll, but I'm not the only person involved, so I have to learn how to make what I do fit with what other people do. I've been an advocate for standards-based grading for my entire 20-year career. Probably been one of the longest and loudest voices for it in the district. I was using it when we still had A through F. I had no time for percentages. I'm a standards-based teacher. That said, that's not even the cutting edge of grading. I mean, there's cascading grades. I mean, some kids can't read, some kids can read a 3, some can't till 8. Brains don't develop at the same rate, yet we lock a kid based on their age. Okay, see, now I'm going off topic. But there are many things we could discuss to improve the way we teach children. So, that said, two points. I've been to a whole lot of trainings, I forget the name of the particular guru that was hired from Canada, we all got to go see him for two days, and basically, what he pointed out is so many of the adherence to the 0 through 4 is because we had to break the mindset that an A equal the 4, a 3 equal the B. I think that's what you two were talking about. But for all of us who've been here, that has been broken. And what he pointed out is, it doesn't matter if it's an asterisk or a clown face or what the symbol is, he even said, it can be A through F. As long as we all have a deep understanding that we are standards-based educators and that it has nothing to do with percentages, it has everything to do with rubrics and exemplars that we have to create. So it can be done, and the reason I would like to do that now is because I think it's important that we align and prepare kids for high school. And if there are members of the community that value GPA, or not GPA, what's it called? Honor roll? Oh, well, I guess I'll, but I mean, why, why, why would I make it hard for them? Here you go. A through F should make it easy. But Paul, I just want to say that there was a lot of turmoil in the district at one time, a lot of cycling leadership, a whole lot of initiatives that we couldn't follow through on. And Dr. Aslan came in, he kind of paced it, he kind of just moved with it all. And at a certain point, he had to say, enough, now we live, you didn't say these words exactly, but it's the message that came down. We have to stop changing things all the time, and we have to work with what we've made and see how it works for a while. Not all of us were happy with the 1, 2, 3 model. I actually went to a training from Rick Wermly, and one administrator said, I like that 1 through 3, let's cut the 4, and that's where it went. And I wasn't even okay with it. I wasn't even one of, people were not happy. And there's a lot more to standards-based grading than the marks. We have a lot of the infrastructure that's not in place yet. Like I said, the rubrics and exemplars at a district level. So we have a lot of work to do to even make it work, period. But since Dr. Aslan now had us work it for a few years, we've come to a consensus as teachers. teachers that it's not working. And we hear parents saying that they don't know what it means and we hear our colleagues at the high school not happy and I think it's time we make a change. I love standards based grading. When I heard, when I heard this stuff, I was swearing. I know I'm not supposed to. But at lunch, I lost my mind.
Excuse me, I was, I was ready to jump off the clip this morning when I made that phone call.
I was in the room, I mean, I was bothering, I was throwing, I was throwing.
What I needed to hear, and I haven't heard this yet, and this is the first time I heard it, was I need to hear that this is what is being recommended by our administration. Because I didn't see that in any of the packets that I looked through today. I just saw that the board has asked us to come forward, therefore we did. Now you get to make a decision. Now, we are all laypeople, most of us are not in education, so therefore we need to be educated, make a decision. And what I guess I needed to hear is I need to hear you to say, this is the best thing for our students. This is going to help our students.
So recommendations to consider.
That's what I hadn't seen anywhere until we got into this meeting today.
Right.
So are you willing to say that this is going to help our students or is this going to hurt our students?
I believe it's going to help our students.
Having an honor roll is a good thing to have in the middle school?
Honor roll is what the board wanted and so.
I'm asking you again because you're the educator.
Sure, I mean, if that's what the board considers is what we need to do. We're here as part of the honor roll process, yes, I guess. And then with that, we're going to have to do some changing in our grading to make that happen. How's that?
Didn't you tell me that there were other things we could honor besides just As and Bs, like attendance and?
Yeah, there are multiple things you could look at, sure.
I like the idea of dividing students. You've got the gifted and the non-gifted and that's really what an honor roll shows. And, and that's what you're doing, you're dividing. You're showing the haves and the have-nots and it comes down to equity, society, wealth, all sorts of things. When you look at an honor roll, if we look at an honor roll, you could look at the number of students that are on our high school honor roll that come from families that are not on the low income families. You can look at, and that's a societal thing.
Paul, we've been, we've been over this same situation over and over and over again and it never goes anywhere other than you think that we're dividing students, but what we're, what we're really doing is recognizing their hard work and it's not dividing whether you're from a low income family or you're from a high income family. Just because you come from a low income family doesn't mean you, you aren't, you can't be an honor roll student.
And if you come from a high income family, doesn't mean you are an honor student.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm going to raise my hand, I'd like to say something. Okay, I think what the point is, is that this is going to help not, besides honor roll, is we're not just throw that out the window, it's going to help focus, hyper-focus because we had it in three categories. Now you can focus on the zeros and the ones. So it's hyper focusing and not just generalizing to three categories. Three categories is not helping, clearly. And they'll be able to still do the same things, it's not throwing out the whole.
Standard based grading.
It's kind of, it's refocusing and making it a little more hyper focused on the ones that maybe need a little more help too. So let's just throw the whole, it's just about the honor roll, it's not. It's making this standardized system better. That's my two cents.
And, and we're, and we're aligning with the high school, which again, we always have been focusing on, we want all three schools to align together. So when these children go from fourth grade to middle school, which we know is a, is a challenging time as well, and then from eighth grade to being a freshman, that's another challenging time. And so the more that we can give them, whether it's standard based grading or A through F or having their parents understand better way, as long as we're teaching and educating them the way we should with standards based, we can still make and have everything all together in one. That's, that's what I'm clearly seeing out of this information.
Agreed.
Okay, with that said, do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting next week? With the exception of Mr. Scherz, if you could find out that information for us regarding that 3.5 versus 3.6? Maybe? Okay, okay.
So I, you know, we have a short turnaround time between meetings this month. It was the President's Day holiday. So a question I would have, if you reach consensus to move it forward, is it, is it for consideration at the meeting a week from today? Or is it for further discussion at the meeting a week from today? Or consideration, some sort of decision at some point in the future?
I think, let's just make the decision, if you can find something out before, just send it out to us.
Okay.
And then I still think we need to make a decision so that the middle school can move forward if they need to.
Okay, again, do I have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes, opposed? All right, we have consensus to move it to the regular board meeting next week. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on now to item G is discuss the proposed membership of the employee handbook committee. Dr. Aslan?
So we, we are bringing forward names for your consideration for appointment to the employee handbook committee for the work that will take place in 2022.
Okay. Okay, so do we have, do you have any questions for Dr. Aslan regarding the appointment of any of these individuals regarding the handbook committee?
No, years past, we used to have a representative from the school board on that committee and maybe that's, you know, times have changed. Just know that used to be in the past before COVID.
I don't believe, yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
That's your purview though, if you, you want a school board rep on it.
Does it come to us in the end to be voted on?
It does, it does. So I think that we could leave the, the work to the district administrators and employees to come up with what they need to come up with. So do we have consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, and we're going on to item H, which is to discuss the Niola update to policy 8500 food services. So we had that information sent over, have everybody got a chance to look at that? Do you have any questions regarding that? If not, I'd like consensus to move this to the regular board meeting for the first reading, please.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And we're moving on to item I, which is discuss the updated district office job descriptions. Dr. Aslan?
So when Mrs. Grindell's time in the district came to an end and we were just not successful in hiring a replacement for the director of operations, we tasked jobs out to existing personnel with the understanding that we would conduct a review after we'd had some time to actually see how the, the duties shook out in reality and these, so these job descriptions would be a reflection of that review after having six months to operate under this current configuration.
Does, does anybody have any questions for Dr. Aslan regarding the job descriptions? Okay, if not, do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes?
For first reading.
Oh, for first reading, I'm sorry, for first reading.
Yes.
Yes. All right. And we're moving on to item J, which is discuss the elementary and secondary school education relief three plan. Dr. Aslan?
Look to the big warriors.
Awesome.
If you'll recall, back in late spring when we began the conversation about ESER 3 coming online, one of the requirements of the ESER programming is for a periodic review. So that's what we will conduct today, a periodic update, I should say. So just a little bit of a background on this with ESER 3, ESER again stands for elementary and secondary school emergency relief. And we are to the third iteration of that, ESER 3. In terms of guidance on the allowable costs, we, the district applies for participation and reimbursement via the Wise Grants Program. That's one of the DPI online programs that we use for our interaction, as do all public school districts with the DPI. Structures around the main tenants, the program, which we'll get to, district plans are approved after the state plan is approved. And I gave you that same bullet back in May. And I'm going to tell you that it was just last week that it looks like the state legislature has approved the state plan. Now it has to go to the federal level for approval. So we have submitted our plan and we are on hold until the state's plan is approved. Again, with ESER 3 and as we, based on the facts on the ground right now, it's the final iteration of ESER and all districts participating must submit their requests for reimbursement by September 2024. And some program elements remain unidentified. That's what I will tell you is some of them are just not real clear right now and hopefully will become clear as the state plan makes its way from Madison to Washington DC for approval. Driving on ESER program types, these are the, the tenants. So allowable programming, preparedness in response to COVID-19, addressing long-term school closure, educational technology, outreach and service delivery to special populations, addressing after school and summer school programming, mental health services and supports, and continued staff employment. So again, those are the types of programs that are allowable. And it doesn't require districts to do all of them, it just provides some parameters for what's acceptable. ESER plan update, if you will recall back to our conversation in May, our intent was to hire learning support specialists, so teachers that could come in and provide that extra scoop of support that you've heard about a few times this evening. And we, we sought to hire three licensed teachers and we were able to hire two, based on applicants and availability, as all of these are. Full-time substitute teachers, learning support specialists, two were authorized in the district, we have hired zero. And I know that you have heard at great length the challenges that we have with substitutes in this district and every other district in the state. Student support specialists and provide extra emotional, social, and mental health support, two authorized, two hired. So those positions are in place. Adding an additional health aide, a 1.0 FTE of time, and that 1.0 FTE of time has been hired. Increasing time and benefits for the existing health aide positions, and again, that took place and that was about a $40,000 increase in the budget that went forward. And adding buildings and grounds, staff person, 1.0 FTE authorized, 1.0 FTE hired. So that's kind of ESER, an ESER update on positions since, since May. So next steps, as we move into the spring, we'll be reviewing the ESER 2021, 22 positions. And because it was a new program, really taking a look at the positions and using current data determining needs as we go into the next school year. I will work with the CISA 11 consultant on grant claims and getting our plan approved by the state when that time comes, which we're confident that we're not going to have any problem doing. We will be working in these coming months to determine ESER 3 requirements within 2022, 23 budget. And we, you know, we aim to continue the practice of the past five years where we bring you a preliminary budget in the spring months for you to adopt so that we can staff off of that. So ESER will certainly will play a key role in that budget. And finally, posting and hiring for positions that, you know, based on the needs and what we'll, what we'll have to do to fill positions going forward. Questions, me?
No, don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will receive and place this information on file. And we're moving on to item K, which is the 30, 16, 90 day planning cycle. And everyone had a chance to look that information over. Is there any questions? Okay, if not, we're going to receive and place that information on file as well. And item L, the financial update, Dr. Aslan?
So the financial update for the month of December 2021, beginning checkbook balance Total income for December, $1,224,776.83. Total expenditures for the month were $1,310,783.11. General cash balance then at the end of December was $224,681.1. If you were to contrast that with December of 2020, December 2020 had total income of of 1.1 million, 347,135.20. Had total expenditures of $1,297,830.33 and cash on hand at the end of December 2020, So you can see that there are some differences between December 2021 and what the bottom line looked like in December 2022. And we know that December is the month where we use the line of credit to shore up our finances for short term.
Any questions?
Thank you for that report.
All right, we'll receive and place that on file. And moving on to item M, approval of the vouchers. Any questions?
Yep, a couple of questions are with the testing that was on these vouchers. Do you know, is any of that eligible to be covered by insurances?
Or the environmental testing?
Yeah, which is about just shy of 13,000, just on these vouchers.
It's unclear at that, at this time whether it will be or not. We are consolidating, we'll consolidate all the bills that come in as a result of the incident at the middle school and the subsequent actions that we had to take. And then we will be working with our property and casualty and insurance carrier to see if those will be allowable claims or not.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting as part of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, yes?
Yes.
All right, and just a reminder, we do have our regular board meeting next week, not on the 21st. So anybody watching at home and all of us here, if there is any questions that you need answered, there is just a short window of opportunity for you to do that. So I suggest you, you get those questions answered so that you are prepared for next week's regular board meeting. So at this time, I'm moving to item three, which is convenance to close session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 parent one, parent C, to consider the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Do I have a motion to convene into closed session? Do I have a motion to convene into closed session?
Oh, moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Ben T. Carroll?
Yes.
Al Jefferson?
Yes.
Ethel Melton?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Okay. Mr. Johnson?
We are now into open session, it is 7:40 hours, 7:40 PM. The announcement is the board had a discussion and took no action during the closed session.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thanks.
Thank you.